...supposed to be, because you guys know that, right?
Just go.
And when they, if it's just the land altogether and has two houses on it, you can't assess those two separate house lots, it's the lot plus the...
But you charge for the buildings?
Yes. Yes, oh yeah, the buildings are separate. This is just about the land.
So this is some that weren't divided and we divided them?
No, we, we charged them.
They had two houses.
They had two residences.
They had two houses.
On one lot.
On one lot.
We were charging them for two home sites.
For two home sites or two house lots?
Two house lots, same thing.
Same, same difference.
Yeah, there's no real way to do that because it's no division line driven. What in there is it?
That's correct. So we were doing incorrectly, so... The Senate fixed that this year, so everybody that has two houses on one land lot only gets charged for one land lot, then the houses are separately, but, um, so they're asking for their abatement.
Now who pays the tax bill?
I mean, this is their land. They pay the tax bill on the land with their house.
Okay.
And then the other houses pay their own tax bill separately.
In other words, the other ones paid on building?
Yes, absolutely.
And these, these guys pay on the land here?
Yes, yes, and their buildings.
They work it over the...
Yeah, they work it out however they do it, but that's the abatement for it.
How much would they give back?
Well, three years, that's why, because they go back to three years.
Yeah, still not bad.
Oh, did you want, I'll turn around, Paul.
So this one, I, I, it looks like this one is, um, have water plants. And, um... I don't know exactly what they're asking.
That's not very different set of rules, is it?
Well, it is, and, and, and I don't really understand what they're asking, so if you guys, that's why I'm, you know, you guys read it and see if you can figure it out. I'm not sure.
In other words, that's kind of, we figured like the other, the other waterfronts.
Well, it was, it was, but they're thinking that they're, that it's not...
Right.
It looks like they think it was, it still says two lots, so I don't know how you want to handle that. If somebody wants to call them and talk to them. It has to be responded to, so I don't...
How many of them have we got so far on the...
Oh, I've got a list.
On just the water plants?
Mm-hmm.
Is it enough that we weren't getting the meeting together?
Mm-hmm, I think so. I mean, it's probably five or six people, six or seven people. And, um... You know, I, instead of making people wait, and, and some of them are just interested, but not know how, how to get to them.
Guess we'll have to, we'll have to go through them and look and see if each one is actually different or if we're going to have the same answer.
Some of the calls I'm getting is just to say, I want to know how you came to that assessment. So, and I've told people that we're going to have a meeting. We'll hopefully have a meeting that, um, you know, that they could come and sit in it and ask a question or have it explained to them. This one is, I think you guys went down here. This was 157 Indian Road.
We did, yeah.
Arthur Reed, the state of Arthur Reed, they're looking for an abatement.
Jeremiah Bush, he would come in before and talk to us after her...
Yeah, we said so.
Dad had passed away, you guys have gone down and measured and done it.
So they're filing again? Well, wait a minute, was that under, yeah, that, that happened during the summer, didn't it?
Well, she filed it on the seventh of June, I mean, October.
Right, this time. Didn't, didn't, didn't they file before and they were past the time that they could file?
Well, they were past the time.
It was past April.
Yeah, that was past the time, but you got, you also went down to look at it too, and measured it, like, and all that stuff.
And I have a purchase order for, um, the weapon invoice for my appeals board, or the appeals board.
I don't understand quite all of this, but...
I think, you want, you have a voice, I think we need to wait until we have the conversation with, um, Ben, he'll be in next Monday.
Yeah, this one here for sure, and it's not real clear, he's not real clear on what he's saying either. I recognize this one, I remember this one, I spoke with those people personally. Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll have to hold this one till, till we, after we have the conversation, um, then next Monday, because that's waterfront, so we'll put that in the waterfront, um, questions. Do you remember that situation, Paul?
What's that one about?
That's, uh, gentleman that passed away, his daughter had come in and wanted the abatement. Do you remember that? And you guys went down, did you go down too, or just Royce went down and measured it and looked at it and...
Mike, look that up, Mike.
Yeah. But wasn't it consistent how we had a tax with everybody else's? Did you guys want to measure it?
This is not a waterfront lot.
No, it's not, no.
So that'll be different. Well, as far as another appraisal goes, if it's not a state assessor, then they're not gonna, they won't, the state won't recognize it anyways.
I just want your opinion, because you, you had been down there, and I'm not sure where we should go with that. I mean, I want to make sure that, um, you know, we're consistent with everybody else's too, before you say yes or no.
Neither, neither one of these people would, would counters an appraisal as far as the state goes, as far as when they find, if we can't have a final decision on that. They're clear about that, very clear. And that's what they're basing most of, most of their claim on, is an appraiser, anybody can hire an appraiser, and depending on who they're working for, it doesn't depend on what they give for price, basically, how it works out.
I remember, maybe she brought us pictures of it and everything. She brought us pictures of it. Can you guys not talk while we're having a meeting, please?
I remember the place, and I remember going and talking, seeing it with Mike, and Mike and I actually made, somewhere around the record here, we've got a, oh, one of those little diagrams that we draw up for everybody, again, especially a lot of them on waterfront this year, and, uh...
So you think it should stay, you think we should, because it's consistent, I think, from what we do for everybody else?
Did, did this one change from last year?
I'm not sure.
Could we check on that, just see if it's...
What do you mean, did it go up?
The assessment go up or go down? Want to see what we were assessed at from last year?
I think probably staying the same. And if it's, if it's gone up, we consider it, well, that, that puts it in a different situation regardless of what they say.
I don't think it has. And actually, the home site exemption is on there, and it probably shouldn't be either.
That's true.
Well, but he was here as of April 1st, I believe, it was after...
Yes, he was.
So that was okay, so...
Even if it was, even if it was a little bit later than that.
Yeah, he passed away in May, so he was here, so that's, that would still be the other side.
That should stay.
Okay, that'll come off next year.
Yeah.
No, it's the same.
It's the same.
It's the same as the...
It went down, because they all did, it could have the, um, fifteen thousand...
Yeah, the exemption.
That's right, that's right, because they, yeah, so that went up to fifteen thousand from ten.
So, you know, for consistency, you know, probably I would say we'd have to, um... I, I would feel that we'd have to deny the abatement only so we're consistent with everybody here.
But will it let them know they have a right to appeal it, and the proper channels that they can all that?
If you'll sign the back circle there, say, deny and sign, and then I'll write a letter, and you guys can sign the letter.
Okay.
And I should also add that the state also goes on recent, uh... sale values, you know, of, of similar properties.
Yeah.
So, chances are, there's a similar property out there that sold for more money.
So do you want a motion?
Yeah, I'm taking a motion. That on, it's going to be a compromise.
To deny.
To deny, um, abatement from the state of, um, Arthur Reed Jr. Any seconds of mine?
You got it, yeah. Take a vote.
All of them. Just for consistency, you know?
Okay, and this is a letter to the homeowners that, I forget who it was, what, what do you think, the law?
Tested.
Yeah. Because I called them a couple times and nobody answered. I haven't heard back from them, so I'm sending a letter.
And they were in touch with us, what, uh, back in June or something, or before?
Who, the DEP? No, they didn't, they didn't get in touch with us, the DEP did.
Oh, okay.
And then I had to sign, we had to check on getting somebody to test the water, and then I did, and I tried calling them to see when they'd be available for the guy to come over, and nobody's responded, so...
They really should be a little more concerned. At least until, until it's all passed, until it's all been passed by the state provides, I'm not looking at that one.
So actually, I do have quite a few people on too. There're probably better dozen people who want to come in and talk.
Should set up immediately, then?
Yeah.
He's coming Monday.
If they're all the same thing, if you'd like, I'll look through them too, give you an opinion on it.
He's coming Monday, goodness.
He is?
Yes.
He's meeting with you guys Monday at four.
At four o'clock Monday.
So you can talk to him then about whether or not...
Yeah, we shouldn't confuse that with, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, well, he's got, you know, I give some good details, if, if it's us explaining how he assessed, or if it's him explaining how he assessed, though, we don't handle that.
I think we'd be smart to have him explain it this one time around, and a new issue.
Yeah, well, that's why I want my boys to come in, so we can get, yeah.
Because you can't get, you can't get all something here.
Yep.
I think that's all I have for now, I don't know, I probably have more, but I'm not sure. Do you want, um, me to get Mike?
Yes, please.
Yep. It's stained, isn't it? I think they passed out about ten abatements.
Okay, let's see that stack of abatements.
Her victims?
Yeah.
I don't know whether I have...
Oh, she was mom, I think, probably.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not sure with that.
Yeah, a couple of copies.
Yeah.
He's on the phone, but he'll be here soon as he's alive.
Um, let's see, I don't have my little... If it's okay with you two, I would like to, um, send the franchise agreement with the three-year, um, contract, you know, the ordinance that we can't sign one three is to Anne Freeman, I kind of talked briefly about it, um, and she says it's just the wording, and she could advise us on some wording on that franchise agreement. So if that's okay with you, I'll send all that over to her, I'll get that sent to her.
And if it's necessary, we'll sign it before you send it.
Yeah, I don't think we need to, she just wants to review it and see what they wrote to, and put the right, she said she just, we probably just need to change the, um, she'll advise us on the wording, on how she'd say, the three-year contract and all that stuff, so that way we'll move on from there.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, that's all.
So you're, you're going to send the whole agreement?
I'm going to send the whole franchise, um, agreement between the town of London and her past, um, and the, Paul followed me, the ordinance and the town are required, so I'm going to...
Okay, so, so you're sending it to her, review it?
Yes.
And then change it, so it reads the three-year contract?
She's going, well, I don't know, she'll change it, she'll, she'll tell us, she'll give us some ideas, yes.
Yeah, there's a suggestion.
The wording, there's a suggestion on how to word for the three-year contract, um, index, we need to get that finished up, because that expires into summer.
We need to finish that up, like, oh, so...
Get that all together. Has anybody been in, um, as far as animal control? Do you know?
Well, Carol was in last week, and I gave her a copy of that, but I don't know, I haven't heard anything about her.
Can you just send her a little text and follow up and see if she kind of got through with that, um, complaint about the chickens? See what her resolution was for that complaint about the chickens? Did you guys see this one? I don't know, you can put this, so you can probably put this in the book, I want the book up there. Yes. Have you seen that one, Royce?
No.
I think Paul probably has one.
This probably lives on tour too.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's not a trash, it's coming off the trail, off some of the trail trucks that pass through.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
We always find something once in a while, a bag or something that came off one of the tops of those big trails.
Yeah, sometimes it happens. So it's a complaint, um, that says every time pickup...
Before we discuss it, any names on it?
I'm not, I'm just going to say what the complaint is, it's about, um, every time it picks up trash, or, um, it loses it on the road. And then the trash just sits there, it's just a complaint that people lose that trash on the side of the road, so, do you think that we should give this, do you think we should, um...
That person should...
We should call them in for a meeting and have an executive session maybe, or do you think?
We could.
Um, and ask them if that's happening, if they're aware of it being happening, um...
We could, I got a feeling that it's not even...
You think that's probably, maybe not, but we need to follow through with our complaint to make sure they're aware of something.
Absolutely, everyone's got to write from here.
So, so do you want to make an appointment? Well, it's for...
Is it a personnel issue?
No, well...
Is it confidential record?
Trash.
Can you just hold your things to the end, Lisa?
Mm-hmm.
So, um... I don't know, so we reviewed it, and then you'll set up an appointment. And you're probably correct, it probably is not confidential, but I'm not going to have the conversation until that person's here.
It could be a good thing to ask about.
And they can defend themselves.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, maybe I worded it wrong, but, I will check, but...
They have a bubble, they have a right to, to defend themselves, but also...
So, that's right.
The format, we need to decide on that.
Yeah. I don't really have anything else, um...
Mike's coming in.
No, Mike's coming in in just a few minutes. I would like to say, um, that it's extreme, oh, something else that I think we need to talk about in the near future, but it's extremely busy here due to the election, it's tax time, um, that we should thank all of our staff, Sue helping them, the new girl trying to cross-train, the part-timer, Dale trying to keep up with absentee balloting and taxes. I think it's kind of a crazy place, and, um, I'd just like to thank all the staff for working hard, um, and trying to get the jobs done.
Is that a motion?
It's not a motion, it doesn't need to be a motion.
Exactly, and if it was...
I realize how busy they are and how stressed it can be when it's like this, so it's... Yeah, the computer was down this morning because somebody hit poll rights, is that what happened down here?
Yeah, down by Second Street.
Was it early when they hit the poll?
It lasted about seven?
Seven oh five, which is... We lost our internet and phones at, I don't know, seven thirty quarter. Maybe it was even a little later than that. Yeah, we lost them.
Oh, mine goes to Milton.
Yeah, he probably lost one.
We had a head on right after that down on the bridge at East Ratch, I don't know. So it was like back to back.
Is that right?
Yeah.
I heard that was the second.
Hey, Mike.
Hi, Mike.
Hi, hello, everyone.
They've been busy. Oh, and one more thing before Mike goes, um, I've had a little bit of, um, conversation about, um, washing the trucks at the fire station due to us being in a drought, um, so I think that we need to let him know maybe if...
Not the truck, private cars.
Oh, the private cars, okay, so that's what it was, okay, so washing the, washing their own vehicles, um...
Oh, yeah, they're washing their own vehicles.
I don't know, we should ask, we should ask the chief if it's true or not true, we just heard that rumor. And if they are, then we need to stop that, because we are in a drought, washing the trucks here, right, is one, is one thing.
It should have come in as a written complaint to the office, did it do that?
It, it did not, but I'm just bringing it up just so if he, if he's unaware of it, I'm just kind of, I, I don't know, it was just, you know, so, it did not, it's, it's not a...
I mean, we're just not carrying on a rumor until it's...
Absolutely, let, let him know that it's out there and, um, you know, just in case. Because we are in a drought, and I just want to make sure that we don't, you know, run out of water, so. Anyways, Mike?
Hey, good, what you, you seen our pond?
What pond?
Right, exactly.
I have one too, that's still got water in it, but not a lot.
Yeah, mine either, scare, I've never seen that.
Me either. What can we do for you, Tim?
So, um, this one on the way to work, this was kind of brought all my work together today, there were, there was another lot that was being cleared, but there was excavation equipment there, and it wasn't jet, not a skid, excavation equipment on T. M. Otworth Highway. This lot was split, couple of different, couple of, two different, uh, nine-acre lots. And the first one, I think I've mentioned before, I think a fellow wants to put it together, puts out a fifty by a hundred-foot building, keep that in mind. Uh, to put a haunted attraction up there.
Yes, I've read that.
Okay, so, I guess he's going to miss this season. Okay, so, uh, when I was driving by this one, like I said, I seen the second lot. So I got the name of the construction company off the side of the equipment, and ended up calling him today, uh, the Abbott Construction and, um, Landscape and Business. And, and a conversation with him...
Does not go where it's at.
Pardon me?
Is that the Abbott or Town?
No, 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 they're, I'm sorry, they're out of Beverly, uh... They're on Massachusetts, I've had them in Beverly.
I saw them.
Anyway, uh, after a lengthy conversation with this fella, come to find out they're going to be doing another medical marijuana building in that facility. And it's going to be a fifty by one hundred-foot steel building, remember I said the first one, the haunted attraction? So, a lot of my work today was based upon growth, we only have quite a few of them in town already, so, um, I've looked up other towns, been talking to other code enforcement offices, and what they do about the growth of this, and you could have, at the rate right now, you could have every other neighborhood have a medical marijuana facility.
Yes, we have multiple.
Right, and we still don't. There are some towns that have come up with ordinances, they can't tell them they can't do it, but they can put regulations on them. For instance, the town of Pittsfield and Oregon York is wanting their job, right now, I'm, I've got to call into Sanford, where they're battling that right now, but they can, they can have restrictions in all ordinances on things like location, two hundred and fifty feet away from churches, schools, playgrounds, halfway houses, rehabilitation centers, municipal buildings, businesses, professional offices, because really, we have a responsibility to our neighbors and our businesses, to them, to the hours of operation, the security surveillance, lighting, fire safety, onsite consumption, visibility of activity, sale of eligible, uh, eligible edible products, uh, which would fall under the food establishment licensing requirements, uh, the maximum of dispensaries, uh, and no visible displays, this is just some of the ordinances that other towns have put into place, none of them have been challenged yet, though. So, uh, because they can't really be stopped, so...
And that's the medical side.
Correct.
And why not go into the other side, the recreational, it's going to be a whole different thing, it's going to be a lot bigger problem.
There's a lot more regulatory, um, restrictions with that, they're, they're doing a better job than the medical marijuana is, um, so, but, back to, some of these who start out as medical marijuana, I, I assume would jump into the vandal magnet with the recreational. Some of the criterias for the recreational are the people, the growers now, the caregivers now, who have been in business since two thousand and twelve, would have priority over new businesses coming in who want to start this, and I would keep an eye on the two oh two corner. And I would keep an eye on the two oh two corner. Because that is a gateway for people, it's a retail business.
Yeah.
And that's probably the best place to do it. So the growing operation in a retail store would be probably two different places. So, I, I just wanted to let you know that I was working on, or need to work with, because the planning board really needs to get involved with this. And by the way, we have a new member. I was talking to her today. Do you remember her name? Has she put a letter of interest in yet?
I don't know.
Someone who would be very eager to join the, the planning board, so you-
I have, no, I don't know anything about it.
Okay, so they may have a fighting board now.
Okay, good.
So, um, it's at, you have a construction.
She needs to put something in now because we, she needs to get pointed for planning board.
Yes, yes, I told her that, yeah. Yeah. I was just trying to see if someone wanted volunteer there.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
It's hard to get volunteers and, and get volunteers, so-
So I have a question for you as you're talking about this stuff, and I know that we need to do something and, and change it, and you're working on that, and that's great, I appreciate it. Um, here's my question, as we move forward and the town grows and changes and grows, is what about zoning ordinances? Zoning parts of your town this way and parts of your town that way. And I know a lot of people be grandfathered because of the way, if there are establishments there-
Oh, you create a grandfathering clause.
Right.
Okay.
Because you don't have any grandfathering clause right now, so you could create a grandfathering clause. And your ordinance would be your zoning. So your, your, your planning board, I mean, that's a big job.
It's a huge job, but I mean, we've got to do something. We've got to change where we're building these buildings in between homes and families, or else we're gonna lose little town Lebanon. We're gonna lose what we have as families and kids out playing and, you know, riding their bicycles and being safe. I mean, I'm saying that they're not safe doing their own thing, selling whatever they're doing. I'm just saying that these big buildings, a hundred by whatever, that's huge to put in between six little houses that look so cute with their little, you know, it's just not- this little town isn't designed to do that, but we are, the right away to New Hampshire who doesn't have this stuff that-
It interrupts the character of the town.
Yeah, it sure does.
And let's talk about the safety factor of it too. Uh, just recently, one of the, one of the growers, uh, facility was broken into. There was a stabbing involved.
Yeah.
So, this type of business, you know, does attract-
It does.
Other, other things like-
It does. And being on the New Hampshire border is not gonna help us any.
No, because New Hampshire can come in-
And they're not, they're gonna come in and buy their product, and they're gonna go back.
Yes.
You know, we're gonna have a lot of traffic with that. Um, so I'm not sure-
So I just wanted to kind of get the ball rolling, like, uh, in, almost every town in the state are, are looking for the health officer to head this off. So I'd like to head this off and start bringing it to the planning board and, and show them, you know, not, not direct, not, not, um, just give them some direction, give them some, uh, information to look at and join in with the, the, uh-
How long before we can get some kind of regulation over books?
Uh, you know what? It's not happening overnight.
We're talking years, we're talking months, talking decades.
Months into years, yeah. Months into years. I mean, I, I, when I was talking with Pittsfield today, it took them, this is a two-year program they've been working on. They saw it coming. Instead of working on it.
And other towns have some already.
Yes. Oh, yeah. York, Pittsfield, Sanford.
Water.
Yeah, I think, uh-
We have an ordinance.
Yep.
Yeah, like, it only goes so far, but I should get that for you.
That'd be great.
I have a copy of it for you.
Yep.
Because I have one, yeah.
Mike, did you say both of those are going on TM Wentworth Road?
Well, as I said in the beginning, remember the ten, we had the fifty by one hundred building. The first one's supposed to be a, you know, haunted traction.
On TM- TM Wentworth Road?
Let's, let's read between the lines here, okay? The next one is going to be that same size building doing that.
On the adjacent lot.
That's suicide.
It, it's here.
Suicide.
It's not coming. It's here.
So we have to deal with that, we have to-
Yes.
Don't they have to apply for permits to build these things?
Yes. What's to stop them? There's no zoning.
There isn't. We have nothing to stop them.
Someone has a piece of property, who is to stop? The only other, the only other regulation we could have is a growth permit, a, a growth, uh, ordinance. Growth ordinance, meaning like, you know, to keep up with all the services like school, uh, roads.
So if people can just say they want to build something like that, they don't need permission?
Correct. Because they've already got permission. They've, they're already been certified by the state.
Wow.
It's out of our hands.
What about, what about the building standards?
Oh, the building standards still fall, yeah.
Building standards.
They'll meet the building standards, yeah.
They'll easily do that.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, with every, with the surveillance, the, the fire suppression, the building code.
Mike, the, I read for over the last couple of years, this company was supposed to be coming into Lebanon someplace past TM Wentworth on the water. It was this big company, they were gonna have a, a retreat for special needs handicap people.
Yeah.
They were making that special, I mean, that was really, really interesting. They were supposed to build that. I was excited about that coming. That would be great, but it looks like the place was trashed. People kept breaking in and destroying everything. Something like that you want.
Absolutely.
You know, they were stealing the metal.
On TM Wentworth.
Oh, my God, that's-
The, right now it's Gary Abbott.
So the property owner for both pieces of property?
No. They've been selling-
Two separate property?
Correct.
So who owns the-
Michael Martel owns the other one.
Michael Martel owns the haunted Halloween one?
He owns the proposed haunted attraction. He, he, right now he's operating in Sanford. He wants to move to Lebanon. I would bet it's probably because of the taxes.
And who owns the pot one?
The what?
The medical marijuana one. The second fifty by-
Gary, Gary Abbott.
Gary Abbott.
They just bought it though, right? They just bought that land.
There was one lot, eighteen acres, they split it.
Wow.
So it was two lots.
Is Martel up from around here?
Sanford.
So, you know, I, yeah, I think we need to meet the planning board and we need to-
Yeah, just give me the go at lunchtime.
Absolutely. Yeah, we need to go with this. You have to do something, you have to slow something down, change something.
Yeah, you know what's gonna fall on down the road, just so you know? Uh, is, you know, no, I did, I said earlier that none of these regulations or ordinances have been challenged. They will be.
They will be, absolutely, yes.
It is a matter of time, so-
But as far as any rules that we can make go, we've gotta have them in place before somebody does something like this, or we don't have anything at all. Well, no, I know these, these do, but anything that, the sooner the rules get put in-
Yeah, we have four, we have four operating, we have four operating, uh, facilities right now.
For marijuana?
So, I make a motion that Mike goes ahead and goes to the planning board in a minute seconds to work on the ordinance, um, for marijuana problem. I can't say ordinance stuff, problem. I can't say problem either because some people wouldn't feel that way, so stop, you're right.
It feels important, right, yeah, so-
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, manager. Paul?
Thanks, Mike.
Paul on favor?
Yeah.
Paul, did you set it, Paul?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Shouldn't have paid my tax bill?
Yeah.
Damn. Okay, Deb. My hand just, come on. Hands wide.
Yeah.
Oh, for God's sakes.
Okay, other business?
Was there any questions?
Yes.
Oh. I have a question.
No.
It's been a very long time that I've been coming to each selectman to try to get an answer about the Naiyads. I guess I should have put a complaint in or something?
No.
Maybe would have gotten it quicker?
Well, the lawyer is working on it.
He's working on it?
She is, yeah. Anne Freeman is working on it, yes.
So Bill Abbott ready when the state's here next week?
Maybe. I mean, I can't say when that thing's ready.
The state has to-
We're gonna read that whole process, what we have of, of, uh, the, no spray, yeah, yes.
Because the state is coming next week, and they ask the same question.
Yes, and he's brought me the thing for, that they want to hand out, so I do have that answer, so, yeah, I'm aware of that.
He wants to hand that out, is he already done?
I think so. I haven't read through it yet, I just thought today, so. Yeah, so I'm aware of it, and we are working on it.
You're done? Yes.
I am.
Okay, so, uh, let's hear him talk about the union at the transfer station.
Yeah.
I had a talk with, um, with Mark Ayat up at the, uh, Labor Relations Board, and he tells me that the, uh, meeting was canceled because the Board of Selectmen came to an agreement uh, that you were going to designate Ronald Patch as a working foreman.
Yes.
So I'd like to know when that vote was taken, because it was not taken during an open meeting, and I'd like to know who voted on it and how the vote went.
We have talked about it several times and-
All three of you?
All three of us, yes. Um, and this is exactly what happened, Deb. We talked about it, Paul and I agreed that we were going to have a, um, we talked about an executive session last week, and yes, we probably shouldn't make this suggestion out of an executive session, that's our fault.
Yeah, it's legal to do that.
So, what happened is when I had the conversation with the lawyer, um, they, and I just got some paperwork today on it.
Yeah.
Um, the lawyer had said that, um, due to our, you know, Paul and I agreeing on it, that he'd go ahead and process that paperwork that says that they can join a union. Um, and it will label the transfer station, uh, Mr. Patch's position as a working foreman, which will take away his depart, he won't be, what's considered department head because that's all galvanies. I have read it, I just have, I just got it today.
Mm-hmm. I can tell you what it says. I have it since Friday.
That's good.
Yeah, and it's supposed to be posted anyway.
Yes, I said that, I just got it today. I mean, I just got in here today, Deb, so I will post it right here. Um, so that is what is happening.
Okay, so let me, um, go a little further on that. Was Selectman Heath aware of your decision to change, uh,
Yes.
Mr. Patch's designation?
Yes.
But I don't agree with it not after any meeting.
But did you actually get to vote on that, Royce, and make that your voice?
I didn't voice my opinion.
No, that's not what I asked.
You're absolutely right. I made a mistake. We did not vote on it. We can do it right now. I make a motion that the paperwork, that the lawyer, the lawyer recommended us on how to word the union, Teamsters Union, um, for the transfer station, um, be enacted, um. Do you second it, Paul?
Yeah.
So, well, your mark, your motion is to change his, that his decision to-
Position to a working foreman.
Mm, because, and, and you know that that now gives him rights-
Well, see, I have a right to-
After this is already published, would, would Cameron be accepting it? I don't think so.
Well, he-
You already accepted it, you were called, you just said that.
You have to go back and change it.
We did accept it in our meeting, and I didn't do it correctly, Royce.
In your meeting?
In our meeting, that we had our executive session.
Did Roy accept it?
Last week?
Last week. No, he didn't, but he knows we talked about it.
But you can't vote on it if you're not in the executive session.
Absolutely, and we should have come out and voted on that.
We should have.
We made an agreement, and it was my state.
So it's still not, legally, we'd like to come over on that.
Okay, let me tell you what Mark Ayat told me. He told me that he received a conference call, which included a few people, and I told you before, I'm not gonna like, just diss everybody because I wasn't privy to that conversation, okay? He told me he received a conference call, and when she was told that the Board of Selectmen approved the change of Ronald Patch from department head to working foreman, okay, and, uh, Matt Terevesic, the town attorney, uh, had been told that the Selectmen approved it.
Yes.
So, I want to know how we went from a Wednesday night meeting, which we left on here at seven o'clock, in which I specifically asked you if you had made a decision during executive session, and you all told me no, to a ten o'clock in the morning conference call with Mark Terevesic and Mark Ayat-
Because I forgot to make the motion and make it out of that conversation.
I asked you about it, though. So did you forget, or did you completely ignore me, or what?
I didn't ignore you, Deb. I wasn't aware that I should have made that motion at that point. Roy, I, I made a mistake. I agreed that it should change. Paul agreed that it should change. I knew Roy seemed to agree, and yes, we should have made the motion. I did not make the motion. So I can make the motion now, and we'll, it's the-
But what you don't understand is that you've already made this
Yes.
to the state
Yes.
which canceled the meeting
Yes.
that people wanted to go to, so that we could learn about the process and about what was legal as far as Mr. Patch's designation. People wanted to go to that. You didn't want to go to that because you had to work, you said yourself in open meeting.
I didn't want to go to that because I didn't want the taxpayers to pay, you know, two hundred and fifty, and the taxpayers, and I, we didn't need to go to that. I want to work this out with them if they want to be in the union, and they do. They want to be in the union, then be in the union. This was recommended by the lawyer on how to do it.
Did the taxpayers just pay for the conference call?
Is there anything that goes on at the dump that you two don't approve? Anything?
I'm not gonna even answer that.
I knew you wouldn't.
I, I just, you know, we're, we're doing what we think is right. Yes, that was an era. I should have made a motion-
It was very, it was sneaky.
It wasn't sneaky, and I didn't mean anything by that.
Well, let me tell you why I have a video. Because people are calling me saying, and I lied, I didn't ask you about motion.
You didn't ask me, but I-
Yes, I did.
At that time, he told me not to make any decisions at that meeting. And afterwards, he said, did you agree? Did Paul agree? I said, yes. He said, I said, Royce did not agree. And that's why I said, he goes, okay, then we can follow it.
But he told you that you didn't have to, like, make a motion in the Selectmen's meeting?
Motion, and that's my fault, and I made the mistake, and I apologize.
So, but what, but what you don't understand, what I'm trying to say is that-
See how you can make it, and you know.
Is that now you've represented to the state that you've already made a motion, you made a decision, and now it hasn't been done.
Tomorrow, I'll ask Matt.
Thank you, because I personally would have liked to have gone and seen what goes on at that meeting, and I know that Selectman Heath had said he wanted to go, and you were trying to start that meeting from happening, and Selectman Heath-
I was trying to make it better for the town. If they want us to join, they can join.
Were you gonna charge the town to go to that meeting, Roy? I don't even know. But I know that there were several of us that wanted to go, and hear what went on in that meeting, and you did not want to go, and so effectively, that meeting has now been canceled by a line, because there was no meeting, and no, no motion, there was no decision, and so effectively,
I will call that tomorrow and ask them, because I did it backwards, how to correct it.
Okay, and you'll let us know at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I couldn't, I didn't get, like, pushed real quick and talk to the lawyer. You could have gotten that one as a guy.
I'm not with Naiyad, Deb.
I know you are.
I'm trying the best I can, and I'm waiting for the lawyers, I gotta get some more paperwork to her, and I'm still sending stuff to her from other things, so, I mean, we're all very busy, so.
So does that mean there's been a job opening at the transfer station?
I have no idea.
They need a manager?
A department head?
Department head, they need a department head at the transfer station?
No.
And who's taking over for Lorraine Pat?
No one at this point. So, I guess, any other business?
Christine?
Yes.
You understand to make a motion. Are you stopping, making their motion?
Well, I think I need to talk to Matt first, to make sure how I do it correctly.
Making their motion right now.
Yes, because I need to talk to Matt, if the motion is correct.
People want to know.
Are we done with that one? Because I have another one to ask you about, Deb.
Yeah.
Okay, so during that, our meeting, I think it was the sixth, we were all crammed into the treasurer's office there. Uh, Sue had come in and asked for permission to bring the, uh, town's laptop into the polling station. So I talked to the secretary of Steve's office, and they have now told me, like, you can't bring the laptop into the polling station. And even if you could, and it was a decision, it's not the Selectmen's decision. The town clerk runs the polling station.
It's not going in the polling station. It's going into where, listen.
That was exactly what she-
It's going into where-
No, it's not.
The regis, hold on, Sue. It's going into where the registrar sits. At the registering table, it will not go into the polling place. It sits at the registrar's table, so the clerk can go in and put absentee ballots if they're returned on that day and not returned on that day, because I have it too, at, when I do it in Waterboro.
Okay, so it's not going inside the polling station? Yeah, because you can't even take a selfie in there.
No, it goes into the regist, it goes into, um,
The registrar's office.
Yeah.
Thank you Christine, for answering, I appreciate it. And I have two voices.
I have one little question.
Yeah.
That's Christine, this is the selectman now. For the last time, we've got minutes, it's eight twenty-two?
Yes, that is correct, Sue's been extremely busy out front helping them, and Jordan's gonna start typing them for us a little bit to help us get them all caught up. So that way we can get them caught up, cause she's been working out front and helping everybody get things done, so.
Why are there never any right to know requests put on the website?
There's some, he's got some right to know requests he has to do, Jordan.
There hasn't been anything put on the website, I think since March.
I don't know, I don't know if we really have to put it on the website, but I can ask him to. I never really thought about putting the right to knows on the website.
Well, there's actually a motion and a vote in a board of selectmen's meeting that when people do a right to know request, in order to, uh, just stop them from having to keep pulling the same thing over and over again, that the official that was doing what is FA or FOAA or whatever it is, put it on the town website. Because once it's been paid for, it should be available for everybody to see.
I was not aware of that, and probably Jordan is too, so I will let him know.
Uh-huh, okay. I thought it was supposed to be available that people in the town got to know about somebody changing their title that works for the town. I didn't think just two selectmen could make that decision.
I'm not gonna go back to the union stuff, I'll talk to Matt about it tomorrow.
I thought people could, there's people who've asked, why? So where do they get, where do they get the answer for, I don't know what to tell them.
How a title gets changed?
Yeah, open why.
This is a, um, union.
So, can I answer her why? I know, I know, I got in trouble for answering her person before already, but that's why I'm asking Christine if I can answer.
Sure.
Okay, so, if Ronnie, we'll just use him because he's the person involved, stayed being called a department head, which he's been being called in this town like for years. If he was called a department head, he cannot be represented by the union, which means that the union has no say over his pay or his benefit. If he's a supervisor, he's entitled to limited representation by the union, which would be under a different bargaining unit than his employees, okay, because he's supervisor. If he goes to working foreman, he gets covered by the same union representation as all of his employees. But just so you know, I had let the selectman know, I found case law supporting the fact that he is a working supervisor. Because he basically does the same job during the day as all the other employees. There is case law to support it, it's just that it was done incorrectly.
But we left the last, meeting last week, we all left here, that everything had stopped at the dump. That nothing was going on with the union and stuff.
Well, it was still going on, we just had, we had talked about it and I made an error.
You.
So I will correct it.
Even a few others talked about it.
Yes.
Not everybody.
Well, it's exactly how the lawyer told us to talk about it, so I will talk to him about it tomorrow, but I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry Dan, I'm sorry.
I'll take back my second.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, at a previous meeting, uh, on behalf of the cemetery care committee, there was a request for information in regard to the mowing contract. Has that information been forwarded to the cemetery care committee?
No.
It probably has not.
Okay. Uh, at the present time, we have, on behalf of the cemetery care committee, a volunteer who is looking for a cemetery that he and a venture club group are willing to clean up. Based upon that information that could be available from the mowing company. The mowing company may know of a particular cemetery that would be the best. Deborah, do you have something?
Um, yeah, because the way that we left it with that young man was that we weren't ready to supervise that kind of a project, you know, at this time. And we gave him some other ideas for projects, and I heard from his mom, I believe he's looking at one of those. But, we do need that information, we've asked for, I think, what, two or three times now, still don't have it.
And even they also. I need to look into whether or not they have to sign some sort of a disclaimer to allow the landlord, so they don't, somebody gets hurt or something, they don't come back on them.
Yeah, that's because we. Yeah, well, actually, when we became a committee, the reason was because them were covered under the town.
Yes.
Uh, and according to the cemetery provisions, laws in the state of Maine, as long as we are a committee of the town, we have the right to access any cemetery, and as a matter of fact, anybody has the right to access. But we can access covered by the town's umbrella insurance, because we are a committee of the town, working under the selectmen.
As members of that committee?
As members of that committee.
Assigned members.
Right, so, you know, we can, not yet we're looking.
What I'm saying is you're talking about giving somebody else permission.
Oh no, we couldn't, you guys have to do that.